And donated for them to be properly recycled. Maggie was also able to have the club work with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to start an annual removal of invasive species. And she's also dedicated her time to Beamline for Schools, which is a research club here at school where a group of students and Maggie came up with an applicable proposal to the world of particle physics and submitted that to a world-renowned particle physics center. So in 2023, her team was voted the 27th best team out of 300 international teams. She's also been on the math team, student council. Her favorite club has been robotics and she's president of Team 1091, our robotics club here at Hartford. And so that has really inspired her post-high school journey. And finally, Maggie was able to discover the specialty of medicine within engineering with the advanced courses she has taken here, 11 college courses and two honors courses, variety AP Psychology, Government and Politics, AP Literature and Composition, Precalc, Biology, AP Chemistry, among many others. And so she has also taken a biology class at UW-Madison and is in the 3.9 GPA, the top 15% of her graduating class. And she shared that she's very excited and thankful to share her story with you.
Hi, I'm Maggie. So some plans of what I'm going to be doing after high school is I'm going to be going to MSOE. I'm going for biomedical engineering and eventually I'm thinking about graduate school to work more in the research field as I have done here at the high school. But I'd say what played into that is definitely robotics. So I think one of my favorite memories here at the school was when I was like the first competition I ever went to, just walking in that stadium and seeing how many other people were like there to support and how many other teams and kids that share the same passion I do. I think that was really important, just to like reach out and like be in so many clubs, like just trying to expand with your peers and try to find those people that like, like have the same interests as you in the science field, but also expanding to other clubs like environmental science. Like that's not something I want to be going into in the future, but it was still really helpful to find friends.
Thank you, Maggie. Awesome. Way to go, Maggie. Our second student of the month is Izzy Lichtenwalner. And she expressed that she is also excited to share her academic journey and future plans with you all. She has maintained a GPA of 3.7 and currently holds a class rank of 64ish throughout her high school year. She has served, has received several awards, including academic certificate for maintaining a high GPA in ninth grade, an academic letter in 10th grade, an academic medallion in 11th grade, and recognition as Rookie of the Year in track and field during, during her freshman year. Izzy has taken a variety of advanced placement courses, including AP Government and Politics, AP Precalculus, Statistics, AP Computer Science Principles. And her co-curricular involvement includes participation in H-Club, Math Club, Best Buddies, National Honor Society, where she served in several leadership roles. And in athletic, Izzy, athletics Izzy has been very involved in both track and field and cross-country, serving as the captain for multiple years. She also has gained valuable work experience, currently holding positions at Walmart as a stocking associate, an eBay lister, and as a seasonal employee at the Hartford Parks and Recreation. So I'll let you, or I'll let her tell you a little bit more about her plans after high school.
Hi, my name is Izzy. So my plans after high school is I'm going to attend UW Stout. I plan to run for the track team there and I'm very excited. I plan to study computer engineering and I also hope to go into the biomedical engineering field, but help in the computer science aspect. My favorite memory at HUHS is just being a part of all the different athletics and especially track because I'd never had even thought about it and now I'm going to college for it and I'm very grateful for my team. And some advice for some freshmen is just go out there and try everything. You don't know what you like, you don't know what you won't like, and try it for a year, stay committed for that year and decide next year if you want to come back.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I just have to say to Maggie and Izzy, I have a daughter who graduated from here four years ago. She's graduating from college at the end of this week. Very similar interests, computer science, chemistry and biology. And so very, very interesting how you guys all have very similar passions and you're going into it. Congratulations. Next would be our donations. So we have a few donations tonight. We would like to thank the GFWC Women's Club for their generous donation of $675 towards our Day of Service and $675 towards our Best Buddies Program. We also would like to thank Serenity Villa Assisted Living for their kind and generous donation of $250 towards our HUHS Day of Service. And finally, we would like to thank GBU Life and Ms. Beth Hughes Walters for the donation of $50 to the Hartford Baseball Program. Thank you for all those donations. Next on our agenda are our reports, starting with our report from our student board reps.
All right. So sadly, this is Sarah and I's last meeting presenting before you guys. So we're here to summarize our, I think it's actually three years of student board representative's time. I am just so grateful to have had this opportunity. I've connected with people that are going to my college and people who go to other schools and none of them have an opportunity like this. And it really has just taught me how to take initiative in my own community and in my own school and just how to relate to others. Because I feel like I have a lot of issues that are important to me, but I don't know what issues are important to others. And so with Ms. Ramla, we have surveyed student bodies and figured out what is really in their minds and what they think about like the school and everything. I also learned just about like the inner workings and behind the scenes of public school. I was involved in private school for many years. My mom worked there, so I knew a lot of what was going on. But my freshman year at public school, I realized I have no idea what was going on here and I kind of missed that, just like knowing what is in the works at the school board level, what's in the works at the administration level and just like how our teachers are working for us and how we're working for them and everything like that. So it's just really nice to be involved again and learn more about the school, especially since this is a publicly funded institution. I learned a lot more about the legislation behind schooling versus like before, I didn't really know a whole lot about that because we just kind of did whatever we thought was best for like the students and everything, which has really also impacted just my personal life and my involvement in like community politics and stuff like that and just really impacted, you know, how I vote and how I think. And I also learned about like problem-solving skills in relation to my peers. So later I'll be talking about the ACT for the juniors on behalf of our junior representatives. But last year I talked about the ACT a lot and trying to find ways that we could get juniors more passionate, for lack of a better term, about the ACT and about their growth in the ACT and just seeing how staff members were approaching that problem versus how I would approach that problem and then what my peers thought was the best approach to that problem, which is really interesting and a great learning experience.
I just want to begin by expressing my gratitude for this opportunity to serve as a youth representative on the school board. It was been an incredible experience and I'm so happy I did it, like I wouldn't go back and change it. It has been great getting to know you guys better and also just getting to work with the other students. Through this role, I have learned the importance of the school board and more about how it works. I also learned the importance of the student voice in the education system and decision-making. And this role has also helped me get a better understanding of leadership, responsibility, public speaking and collaboration. And so I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and I will take these lessons and carry it with me for the future.
And I forgot, I am delivering the ACT report on behalf of Emma, who sadly cannot make it tonight. It's really bad though because she put a lot of effort into this and was planning on coming, but things came up. So they surveyed about the ACT on us taking it, and I want to say it was in March, and they recently got all the scores for that. 129 responses of the 320 juniors, which is a 40% response rate, 86 had plans to attend some form of college. So on the survey, only 129 responses, but that's pretty good from the surveys that we normally have, so that's amazing. And 74.4 believe they have improved from their previous score. And then 69% said they felt overall like prepared going into the ACT, which is great to hear after we had all those OT sessions and outside help. About 90 felt English and reading sessions during OT helped. 86% felt math sessions during OT helped and 91 said science really helped during OT. And so overall, like lots of good feedback and it really just helps us understand how we need to change these sessions for the future and what we should be prioritizing in the future as well.
All right. I'm going to give our little jumpstart update. So a few weeks ago, we started the process of planning jumpstart. This year is going to be a little different than previous years. So jumpstart is technically the first day of school. So the class of 2029 will go through what will basically be a full day to kind of get the feel of what a normal day at HUHS is like. There's still going to be fun activities and a bunch of learning points for them, but everything else is going to be the same. Bussing will be normal. They're going to have their intro with their teachers and like get the syllabuses for all their classes. And then the big part will be them learning MINGA and all the passes and all that fun stuff.
Okay, so me and Olivia are going to give a little bit more update on our tutoring. So a few weeks ago, we did send out email to the teachers for recommendations and they gave us a few tutors and we got out to one of them and they were interested in participating. So, so we're going to try and find out a time for her to come in and try this out.
So sometime this week or in the upcoming week, a trial, like test will occur with the tutor and a few students. And so after that, we want to learn and make some like updates and implementations on the program.
All right. Questions or comments today?
One comment I want to make is you guys have done, not only given us excellent feedback, but you've done work as well. You are gathering data, analyzing it, making decisions on steps moving forward. It's really impressive to see. I mean, we appreciate everything we get to hear from you, but I see the work that goes on behind the scenes too, and thank you so much for that. Any comments from any other board members?
Yeah, I do have one thing. Maddie, would you be able to send me those ACT survey results at a later date so I can actually see the numbers?
I believe so. I do not have access to the survey because it was conducted by Emma, and so I'll have to reach out to her and Ms. Ramos in the back so we can get on that.
Thank you.
I just want to say that you guys do a great job and it's always, your energy and enthusiasm always sort of resparks and rekindles while I'm sitting here. So I just want to thank you because it is all about the students and for you to be a voice of the students is really important for at least our role to be as effective as it can be. Thank you.
So Maddie and Sarah, please stay there for a second. And Heather, would you come forward with me and help me give them the gifts? This is on behalf of the board and the administration here at the high school. Thank you so much. Thank you. That is all for our student board rep report this evening. Next is our referendum projects update from Ms. Tracy Peterson.
Our referendum projects are being released to bidders in a series of bid packages. Bid package one is the work for this current summer and that was approved at the previous board meeting. That's for relighting bathroom renovations and a few safety and security pieces. The bid package bid very well and we're on track with our budget. The next bid package is bid package two for the pool. That is currently out to bid and will be receiving bids by the end of May. This bid package will be up for board approval at the special board meeting in June. Bid package three is for the emergency generator and switchgear, which will be released to bidders at the end of May. So that's a smaller piece, but there is a very long lead time on the generator and switchgear. Bid package four is for the artificial turf only. We're still in the planning phases, but are fine tuning the details for that bid package. And then bid package five is everything else remaining to be completed at the end of the summer of 2026. So that will be for the track, regrading the fields, HVAC roofing, the tech ed addition and the remaining relighting in the building. We also have our groundbreaking ceremony planned, so this is our referendum kickoff. That will be on May 27th at 4:30 PM on the site of our future parking lot and we hope you all can make it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions from board members? I don't think I have any either. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next report is our superintendent's report from Dr. Stacy Kane.
Okay, just wanted to start out with a note of staff appreciation. Last meeting, we took an opportunity to really reflect on the heart of HUHS as we close out the school year with our students and headed into staff appreciation last week. So thank you again to the dedicated, incredible staff that we have who truly love students, families, communities and each other and just continue to provide the learning opportunities and model and inspire and just engage in these incredible connections with our students. So next, really wanted to extend the deepest gratitude to our extraordinary community. A huge thank you to MJ Market and Catering, Maverick, Scoopdville for an amazing lunch last Monday, as well as H&amp;L Farm for the lip balm. Also wanted to thank the Jellin, Gillen and Shrunk families for donating funds for lunch last Monday. Again, just a really special lunch and opportunity for our staff. And also want to thank the kind volunteers, Holly Phillip, Amy McNagle, Nicole Ford, Brian Shrunk, Krish Gatsow, Amy, I'm sorry, Adam View and I see Rourke out there tonight. A huge thank you to all of you for donating your time and really making it a special opportunity for our staff. Wanted to also thank Jenny Gillan for organizing the rocks, scissors, paper game. Super fun. If you had the opportunity to see any of those pictures from the game, a lot of fun, a lot of engagement. Huge thank you as well to Northbrook Church for the breakfast bagels and more last week, as well as the Chandelier Ballroom for the wonderful mac and cheese lunch. Just truly in kind gestures from our extraordinary community. Hans Ace Hardware, Uncle Larry's Rustic Inn, Aaron Inn provided generous gift cards for our staff, as well as families that raised gift cards of almost totaling almost $600. So a huge thank you again to our community. Ms. Locke, Ms. Alejko and the student council put together a fabulous breakfast on Friday and Walmart donated donuts and orange juice. And finally, last but not least, a sincere thank you to Kelly Lamb for organizing the entire week, truly special, as well as many, many others sitting in this room who continue to promote an environment of connectedness and belonging for our staff, which trickle down, obviously, to our students, family and community. So huge shout out and thank you to everyone for making it a truly special, special week. Wanted to move into the mental health and wellbeing update. And McCoy, I don't know if you could please pull that up? That would be awesome. I see Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Ellison out in the, Ellison out in the crowd right now and I know Dr. Shlee, we will jump in as well. But just wanted to kind of walk through, touch base on where we are with the mental health and wellbeing. And so a shout out to our original mental health council who put in a lot of time and effort laying that foundation and now our mental health subgroup who is moving along with some additional pieces. So I won't go through word for word. You guys can always go back, obviously, and look at this, but certainly in how HUHS defines wellbeing, we really are looking at a broad perspective of learning that happens when relationships are fostered in a safe and overall supportive environment. So looking at the subgroup, you can see the purpose and mission of that subgroup, really to look at those instructional enhancements. We have so many great things going on across this building and really are looking at what are some things we can do to potentially enhance, supplement, multiply across our, across our system. And so one of the things we really did on the next slide is talk with staff on all of the great things that are being done throughout the building, inside and out, before and after and during school. And so I'll let Dr. Shlee, we talk a little bit more about those pieces.
So we really wanted to look at how all of these things integrate together because we know that one of the most important pieces or indicators of how well students move throughout their day is their level of engagement, not just in academics, but in all of the categories that you see here, which include behavioral engagement. That could be their level of participation at the school. Cognitive engagement would be what we typically assume we would see during class time, which would be thinking, making connections to the bigger world around them. And then also the emotional engagement pieces, which is that really important piece of fostering relationships. And so we wanted to acknowledge the work that we know is already happening within the school in each of these different categories and how that nexus forms between mental health and wellbeing and what's happening from the teaching and learning lens in terms of how students are engaged throughout the day and throughout their time at HUHS. So this is just a brief overview of things that our, our staff are already currently doing that align with those three key pillars.
And then looking at next steps, we'll have a May subgroup that is going to examine what we can do immediately in the immediate future. And then looking forward into strategic planning into next year from a staff, student and community perspective of obtaining additional feedback and information of where we want to go next. So I'll just briefly, to close out, highlight a few opportunities in the following slides of student resiliency opportunities that we have put forward in HUHS. And so through grant funds, we've been able to provide a few different evidence-based prevention programs, structured programs that really help build resilience, motivation, persistence that a number of students have taken advantage of. We also have, which is not on the slide, continued with the school-based therapists. And so we've had a number of students be able to engage in those opportunities as well as other costs or non-costs to students through some different interventions through county services as well. This slide just highlights the overall visit data each year for the past three years now. We've been keeping data on student service visits. And so certainly, Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Ellison, if you want to jump in at any point in time, feel free. But a couple of things I want to highlight here, we've had an overall decrease of 4.3% in the on-call visits and in conversations with student services and others, we've talked a little bit about some of those proactive intervention strategies, therapy supports that we've put in place that we feel are definitely helping support students within our HUHS to really make those services accessible for students. So I won't go through all the pieces here, but do, we do track the number of students that come in and what they're coming in for, for visits. And so you can see over time, there's an average of 26 average visits per day during the school year. And those visits could be anywhere from, you know, a few minutes to potentially an hour. So there's really a range of time depending on if students are coming in for scheduling reasons, needing to take a break, personal, et cetera. So one of the things as we're finishing out the overall wellbeing, the sources of strength is our overall universal tier. And we had the opportunity this year, we listed some things out there. Just had our peer leader intervention training. And so looking forward to continuing to integrate the sources of strength throughout our system and it's really intended to be connectors for our peers as peer leaders. So excited, I won't read through all those bullets, but a lot of fun and exciting things moving forward with our sources of strength. And then finally, the educator wellbeing. So at the end of the month, we have over two dozen educators that will be joining for our educator wellbeing training. And that really is around learning strategies that support students as well as educator wellbeing in those variety of domains. And so that's really exciting. We do have a handful of educators also coming from Joint One, which is super exciting around the collaboration. And then finally, on the bottom, we have, and this is all through grant money, I would add as well. At the bottom, we have the Staff Resiliency Building Program, which is really a self-paced, private confidential program that, that staff can access to build various skills as well. And then in closing, I believe we have the link on there, there's an overall mental health and wellbeing website that we have on the HUHS website for anyone to access for those resources. So certainly we continue to build that and ask for feedback around the mental health and wellbeing. Any questions for anyone?
Go ahead, Heather.
I just want to say, great job. I think in our community these days, I just finished a class that NAMI hosted and it's, it's prevalent and you know, the more we talk about it and the more it's presented and the more comfortable we get, I think the quicker and the more readily we can help people who are having difficult days. And everyone in the room, I'm sure has difficult days, but we all deal with it differently. And it's just great that it becomes more aware. Mental health and wellbeing is so important because academics come last when we're not mentally in, in a wellbeing state. So thank you for everything.
Any other board members? I'd like to echo that and thank you and the council and the subgroup for all of the work that's gone on for this reason, as well as students and staff that have put in a lot of time and energy as well. It's evident, like Heather, it's evident how this is becoming a subject that is no longer taboo to talk about. We're all in this together. We're using data as well to keep driving us forward. So thank you so much.
And then in closing, just wanted to highlight the Project Adam recertification. So in the 2122 school year, we received our initial certification. And so as part of that ongoing review and revision of our safety plans, we continue to work with Project Adam and Children's Hospital. And so on May 2nd, we were recertified and designated as a heart-safe school. So in order to really complete that process, you really, what you need is a health response team that's able to successfully respond to a cardiac emergency for any student, staff or visitor. So just a powerful program in process to support our kids, our families, our community, both during the school day and well beyond. A huge thank you to Angie Hall for the countless hours and staff that she has trained and the CP, the CPR and AED. So just a huge thank you to her as well. So exciting for all of us, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Piggybacking off of that, I will start my school board report, talking about how last week, Wednesday, Heather and I were here at the district delivering gifts to staff for appreciation week. And we did get to walk into Ms. Hall's class and witness her working with students on CPR as well as including that AED in part of their process. So it was really awesome to see that in action last week as well. And I just wanted to say on behalf of Heather, myself and the entire board, how wonderful it was to be in the building and shake hands with our teachers and hand them a gift and let them know how much they're appreciated. We don't often get to come in during the school day and we're certainly cautious about not interrupting classes, but last week was an exceptional week where we get to celebrate all week long, all of our staff, our teachers, our staff, everyone who works here. So that was truly wonderful experience. I would encourage our board and administration to keep finding those opportunities when the timing is right for, for the board members to be present at different school events or opportunities during the school day as well. Also, in that same thread, for appreciation, last week was wonderful with all the appreciation, all the appreciation. I also want to just reiterate how much extra work I know our leadership team has put in as well as our administrative assistance right now. We have certain gaps in staff and we're all working very hard to, to cover everything that needs to get done before the end of the school year. that needs to get done before the end of the school year. And I would just say, everyone is absolutely killing it. I mean, we are not just covering what needs to get done, we're dealing with, you know, it just has to be good enough. Everyone here within HUHS is excelling and truly ending this school year on a really high note. So, thank you, everyone, for all of your added energy and hours. It's truly appreciated. I also want to add, we heard from Tracy Peterson this evening for our referendum projects update. I'd like to remind our community members to please keep in mind that every time we have a regular school board meeting, there is a period of time right before that meeting for about a half hour to 45 minutes where we have folks here who are willing to give you updates or hear your, your questions and provide you some answers, can be, you know, pertaining to anything regarding our referendum projects. And so, that's a great opportunity. If you have specific questions, just come along. They're right outside the drama lecture hall here. Please talk to those kind folks, and they will help give you information, or they will seek it out for you and get back to you. So, those are great opportunities. If you do not have a chance to get here before a board meeting, please feel free to email Tracy Peterson. She's happy to answer those questions or pass them along as well. And then, last but definitely not least, I want to provide an update for our superintendent search. I know we provided a press release recently, but I want to give you an update right now. The school board has engaged with CISA VI to help run our superintendent search at this time. They did put out the survey and gather information. They did go through those results. They shared them with the board this evening. Our board had a special closed session meeting with CISA VI earlier this evening. And they did share with us that they have reviewed the entire candidate pool and compared them to the, the survey results in terms of what our, our community is looking for in the upcoming superintendent. So, they, they did screen the entire pool, which was 11 applicants at this time. And they are conducting internal interviews as well, screener interviews right now. And we are continuing to work with them. They're continuing to work behind the scenes to get it narrowed down to our finalist pool. So, stay tuned for updates coming very soon and regarding our superintendent search. And that is all I have this evening for our school board report. Any questions or anything another board member would like to add? Okay, that is all for our school board report. Our last report this evening is our Day of Service 2025 from Dr. Stevie Schleywe and Ms. Laura Trapp.
Thank you. We know that Ms. Lamb gave a good overview from the student perspective at last month's board meeting, but we also wanted to give you some more behind-the-scenes work that Ms. Trapp and I and countless others were able to put in prior to our Day of Service. So, if you want to click to the next slide, McCoy. So, this year was our seventh annual Day of Service. Day of Service first began in May of 2018 with a simple mission to give back to the communities that are so supportive of HUHS. Through encouraging students to get out and pick up trash in their neighborhoods when we're all home during COVID, and just hashtagging pictures to see that we were all doing something together, to doing an extended week of service the year we returned to school after COVID shutdowns because we couldn't necessarily enter typical locations that we usually do, we have kept that mission of just giving back and serving as our main focus and our main priority. And I'm hopeful and excited about what the future holds for Day of Service. And I hope 20 years from now to be able to look back and think about all of the countless hours that we've been able to put in.
So, I will speak to some of our site information. This year, we had the pleasure of working at over 80 different locations, from Hartford, Slinger, Rubicon, all the way to West Bend. So, we covered a really wide-reaching area this year, which was great. We revisited a lot of familiar sites, but also had the opportunity to add some new ones as well. Some new stops included the Moa Museum in West Bend, Shalom Wildlife Zoo, the Youth and Family Project in Holy Hill. Sites had the choice to do, let us know whether they wanted the students to do outdoor work, indoor work, or a combination of the two. So, some indoor activities, like our hard worker there on the screen, there was scrubbing and organizing, painting, dusting, some filled boxes for troops. Sun did arts and crafts with, played games with people at the local living, assisted living facilities. And then, some of our culinary kids actually stayed here at school and baked cupcakes and then delivered that throughout the community, which was really great. Outdoor tasks included typical spring cleaning things, raking leaves, mulching, picking up trash, painting picnic tables, cleaning windows, planting flowers. We were happy that it was a mostly dry day. Got a little rainy at the end, but the kids were very busy and did a great job.
So, just also wanted to share some of the attendance information. I recall doing my very first board update about Day of Service after our first year, and we had, we averaged around 84% for our attendance rate on that first year. And now, we're at an attendance rate of right around 96%. And I, I like to believe that, yes, this is growing and, you know, students are coming up having heard about Day of Service. We send students to all of our Hartford-area schools, so they go to the elementary schools, they go to the middle schools so that they're seeing what the expectation is here. But in that, in the span of those years, it's also become part of our ACP graduation portfolio requirement. So, students are required to have a certain number of community service hours prior to graduation. And participating in all four years of Day of Service also meets that requirement. So, we're certainly proud of the attendance rates, as you can see, for all four of those different grade levels in terms of the number of students we had participate on that day. And I know that the sites were very grateful to have all of their students show up and get some hard work done.
So, I was just going to speak quickly to some of the thank yous I received from the sites afterwards. One site mentioned how efficient and friendly our students were and that they're already excited to be a part of it next year, which is a huge testament to our, our students and staff. Another shared how impressed they were with our students' willingness to participate in a day like this, praising their positive attitude even whether, when the weather turned a little bit rainy. And yet another site told us how amazed they were at what the students were able to accomplish and saying that they went far beyond their expectations. So, I think we should all be very proud of all of our students and staff who went out and worked. Not only did they learn a good life lesson, but they made HUHS very proud.
And then, also just tying it back, I think, Tracy, what you had mentioned as well, just in terms of the level of commitment that we have at HUHS. And Ms. Lamb last month spoke about our Life is Good initiative that we really kicked off with Day of Service and how we carried that over into our Staff Appreciation Week and are just moving forward with that mantra of making sure that every day is the best day at HUHS. And we're going to focus on the positive things that happen and that we can control. And this is certainly one of those things that we're looking forward to contributing more in the future.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? This has always been one of my favorite days here at the district. This is truly just one of those days that just brings everybody together. So, thank you very much. I know a lot of work goes into it all year round to ensure that it actually goes, goes very well that day. So, thank you. All right, that is all for our reports this evening. Yes, and so, up next is our, our board reorganization portion of the meeting. I do want to make one change. I'd like to make a motion to omit Item 5D from the board reorganization portion of the agenda. This is something that we do not need to do. There are certain years that we have to elect a representative for the CISA VI Board of Control, and it is not our year to designate a representative. Okay. Okay, fantastic. So, I'd like to make a motion to omit Item 5D.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. I am going to let Stacy and Laura kind of lead us into this next section of the meeting.
Can I go first, Laura?
Yep.
Okay. So, district policy really dictates the election process for school board officers. So, if anyone's interested, you can go onto 0152. But essentially, new roles are assumed immediately upon the election. So, to that end, if current role holders can, please kindly provide support to your successors, that would be wonderful. We will now open the nominations for positions of School Board President, Vice President, Treasurer Clerk, Deputy Clerks, and Deputy Treasurer. So, starting with the president, if only one nomination is received, a voice vote will be conducted by the board. In the event of multiple nominations, a secret ballot will be administered with the assistance of our wonderful student board representatives sitting down there. And prior to each vote, nominated board members will be asked to verbally confirm their acceptance of the role. Ms. Trapp, would you like to add anything to that?
That sounds perfect. They're going to head up and be there just in case you need them.
Okay, and then I'd start it?
And you can, absolutely.
Correct. All right, so is there a motion for Board President?
I will nominate Tracy Henness for Board President.
So, we have one nomination for Tracy Henness. Myself is Board President. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I myself would say yes, I would accept the role if I were voted into it. Hearing no other nominations, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of nominating Tracy Henness as Board President signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that carries. Tracy Henness is our Board President for the next year. Is there a nomination for Vice President?
Nolan Jackett.
We have a nomination for Nolan Jackett.
I will accept that.
Wonderful. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Nolan Jackett for Board Vice President signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Nolan Jackett is our Board Vice President. Is there a nomination for Board Treasurer? I'd like to go ahead and nominate Ken Miller for Board Treasurer. Ken, if you were voted as Board Treasurer, would you accept that nomination?
I would accept.
Okay. Are there any nominee, any other nominations for Board Treasurer? Hearing none, we'll put a two vote. All those in favor of Ken Miller as our Board Treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Ken is our Board Treasurer. Is there a nomination for Board Clerk?
I will nominate Heather Berry for the Board Clerk.
We have a nomination for Heather Berry as Board Clerk. Are there any other nominations? I'd also like to nominate Tiffany Stapleton for Board Clerk. Heather Berry, if you were voted to the Board Clerk, would you accept it?
Yes, I would.
And Tiffany Stapleton, if you were elected to Board Clerk, would you accept it?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so we have two nominations, and so, this will go to a ballot vote.
Board members, if you could write clerk at the top of your ballot and then put an X next to the name of who you would like to vote for, for Board Clerk. And then, our student board reps will grab your ballot when you're finished and deliver them here.
Thank you.
Okay, vote one, Heather Berry. Heather Berry. Heather Berry. Tiffany Stapleton. And Heather Berry.
Okay, thank you. So, Heather Berry, you have been nominated as our Board Clerk. And then, our last one is our Deputy Clerk and Deputy Treasurer. So, this is who fills in if the Treasurer or Clerk are not able to fulfill their role for a meeting or an extended period of time. Tiffany, I hope you'll accept that. Awesome, thank you. So, Tiffany Stapleton, by default then, is our Deputy Clerk and Deputy Treasurer. Thank you very much for designating our board roles moving forward. Our next item to designate as part of our board reorganization is our selection of a representative for negotiations. And now, Stacy, do we just usually primarily do one, or do we also have an alternate?
We do have a backup as well. So, they would be participating in the Hartford Education Association or essentially our teachers' union for negotiations. So, we would typically have a backup as well.
Okay, thank you. I know that Heather Berry has been doing our negotiations during this past year, so I would like to nominate Heather Berry for a representative for negotiations. Heather, would you accept that?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Are there any nominations for our, our backup negotiator? Or any volunteers, I should say?
I would be willing to do the backup for the representative.
Okay. So, we have Heather as our primary negotiator, Nolan as our backup. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then I, we just designate those, correct? Okay, so we have Heather as our primary negotiator, Nolan as our backup. We have our selection of representatives to be our WASB delegates. This is at the Delegate Assembly that takes place at the State Education Convention every year in January. It is a, an opportunity for our board and our district to have a voice in terms of what gets pushed forward at the state level to help with all of our schools. And so, it's great to have a voice at the table. We always have a delegate and a backup designated for this. Is there somebody who'd be interested in being the delegate at this convention in January? Heather, usually consists of the evening before than the day of?
That's correct.
Okay. Which is usually a Tuesday night and a Wednesday? Or is it Wednesday, Thursday?
It was Tuesday night orientation and then Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. So, typically, a Wednesday afternoon for the Delegate Assembly. Is there anybody who would be interested in being the delegate for this next year?
I would be interested.
Okay, Tiffany Stapleton has volunteered. Any, anybody else or any further discussion? Tiffany, I think that'd be excellent. If you could be our delegate, thank you. Is there somebody who'd be willing to be the backup delegate?
I could be the backup.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Heather. Any further discussion? All right, so we'll have Tiffany as our delegate and Heather as our backup. And then, we're going to jump down to Item 5E, approval of the fiscal depositories and authorized signers.
Yes, and if you look at the four that are currently in there, we would have, the first is who would be navigating or managing the referendum funds. And we are required, obviously, to have the depositories for the flow of money through our district. And so, we have a list there of authorized signers as well. So, thank you to the collaboration to Bank 59, Forte Bank, and the local government investment pool.
Thank you, Dr. Gaines. Any discussion or questions from board members? Is there a motion on this list for our reorganization purposes, approving the selection of fiscal depositories and authorized signers?
So moved.
The motion by Nolan Jackett, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. And then, next is our approval of the selection of our official newspaper. We have listed the West Bend Daily News as our primary, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel is our alternate. Any discussion? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the selection of official newspapers.
Is there a second?
I second.
So, you have a, a motion by Nolan and a second by Tiffany. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries. We now have our official newspapers. And that does wrap up this portion of the reorganization. We will see the discussion and action taken for the upcoming board meeting dates and times later in this evening's meeting. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda items, which include the regular board meeting minutes from April 28th, approval of vouchers, approval of treasurer's report, and approval of personnel recommendations. I would like to make a motion that we amend the regular board meeting dates from April 28th. Let me bring it up here. There is just one portion, I believe it is 5E. Let me go back up to it. Yes, just in the school board report, the final sentence just talks about how I invited board members to consider attending the Wisconsin Institute of Law and Liberty. I'd like to make a motion that we add, attend the Wisconsin Institute Law and Liberty School Board Summit to kind of just finish. to kind of just finish that sentence out. Is there somebody who would like to second that?
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending those minutes to reflect that sentence, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay, and that carries. Is there any discussion for any other items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to now approve the consent agenda items, including the amended minutes?
So moved.
You have a motion by Nolan Jackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay, and that motion carries. Thank you for approving the consent agenda items. Next up on our agenda this evening is the items for discussion and possible action. This starts with our June special board meeting dates regarding bid package number two. So again, this has to do with us keeping up in a timely manner with the approvals that need to happen so our referendum projects can be contracted, scheduled, started, materials ordered. Board members were asked to take a look at their schedules for the dates listed in the packet to see when you might be able to attend a special meeting. And so we had June eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, and seventeenth. I'll start it off, I know I could attend a meeting on June eleventh or seventeenth.
I think the eleventh would work really good for me as well.
Okay, any other discussion?
June eleventh works for me.
June eleventh works for Tiffany?
Same here.
For Heather?
Same.
Same, okay. So it sounds like June eleventh is a great day to hold a special board meeting. Stacy, do you have a suggestion on time?
I don't, I'm not sure what the preference is in terms of.
Tracy, do you have a suggestion? Is it possible for board members to get here by four, or is that too early?
It might be a little too early. I'd say like four thirty.
Okay, how does four thirty sound? Is that possible?
I'm good at four thirty.
Four thirty is good for me.
Yeah?
Four thirty works, yeah.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion that we set that June special meeting for four thirty on June eleventh.
I will second that.
Location, would that be in this room? Okay, in the Drama Lecture Hall. Any further discussion? All those in favor of a special board meeting on June eleventh at four thirty in the Drama Lecture Hall, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, looks like we have our special board meeting date. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is project donations and fundraising guidelines. This does go hand in hand with the gentlemen who we heard from earlier this evening in terms of a desire to use some outside sources and outside, you know, people from outside working in the district who do want to work toward fundraising for additional projects here. And so I have, we discussed this prior to the meeting, and I have asked Mr. Helms to kind of help walk us through this. I have not been very familiar with this process, but we have engaged in a few different agreements along the the journey and throughout the years, and so I stepped into Scott's office briefly last week, and he was able to really help me understand further. And I know Stacy's done some research too, so I'll let the two of them kind of talk us through this right now.
Go ahead.
You want me to start out, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, first of all, I'd just like to say certainly we're extremely grateful for
Scott, I think you're mic.
Potential opportunity for our community to, again, just amazing support. There are really two policies that dictate around the fundraising. One is the seventy-two fifty, the naming of the facilities, so that's a general policy around the Board being able to consider essentially donations and also naming pieces to that, as well as seventy-two thirty, which is the gifts, grants, and bequests. And so I know this is not certainly new to Hartford and her Hartford Union, so Scott, do you want to share a little bit about just the past, some past experiences and history?
Yeah, so you can see around campus, there's several different examples of sponsorships or naming rights. I'll start with scoreboards, inside and out. Scoreboards are usually with a termed agreement. You'll see some type of banner sponsorship underneath the scoreboard, or maybe even on the side of the scoreboard. Those terms are usually a five-year term, and then we'd re-up with that company or business or family if they wanted to extend to another five years. Another example would be recently with the tennis complex, we had naming rights for each court. You could sponsor a court. That would term for the existence of that court. So you could see that there were some families, companies that sponsored those courts. That term was for the longevity of the court itself. As well as the concession stand building that you see concessions and restrooms, where Festival Foods has sponsored that building. The term there was for the longevity of the building. So you see a variety of different terms used from scoreboards to courts to buildings, and so as you heard earlier, there are some people in our community that would like to move forward and try to raise some private funds to help offset or pay for the cost of the additional things that we would like to see in the back of the, the building.
And Scott and I talked a little bit further about potentially roughing out some language, certainly that would protect both the donor certainly as well as the school district interest, so we just started that process recently.
And to be clear, these are not fundraising efforts for projects we've already, we've already designated and built into our referendum costs. These are additional projects above and beyond those, correct?
Correct. So as they mentioned earlier, the turf and the track was obviously part of the referendum. As we met with our construction team at our bi-weekly meetings, we started talking about the scoreboard, that's part of the referendum as well. It needs a place for all the electronics and technology to be housed. If we don't have a press box to put it in, we'll have to put it in the track shed, the storage shed. And then once we would get a press box, hopefully, we would have to then move all that technology again into that press box. And so that's when the light bulb kind of came in for the group, like, well, maybe we should try and raise some funds on the outside.
Thank you. Alright, I would just like to say that it's really heartwarming, the amount of support that this community has. Hartford's known for that. We're getting known for it more and more every day right now. So really appreciative of the people who are trying to think outside the box and think about what more can be done here at Hartford Union High School. I think we all know if you're following that journey from the Citizens Facilities Committee that we had over the course of a year and a half. We took the pie in the sky, everything we'd like to have numbered, and kept, you know, getting it down, down, down to what we felt was reasonable, and our voters would, would approve at this point in time. But there are, there are some outline things that of course we had to cut from, from those plans, and so it's really nice to see some of our community members just deciding to take it into their own hands and see what they can do for Hartford Union High School. So thank you very much for coming forward this evening, gentlemen. I, I've heard a little bit of chatter around the district, there might be more people that come forward, and so we, we just need to make sure, like Stacy said, that we're doing what we can to safeguard those donors. So they know exactly, you know, what, what they are potentially going to be getting for donating to the, to the high school in return, like Scott referred to the naming rights, as well as protecting our district, making sure that we're all doing this the right way. Right now, our policy is pretty slim, I would say. Doesn't have a lot of details in it. You don't want it to be too detailed because you do want to work out individual contracts, but we probably have a little bit of work to do on policies and administrative guidelines. Stacy was able to share something with me via email that has a little bit more detail in it. So I, you know, my recommendation right now is we've got folks who are ready and willing to go for fundraising. I believe we already do kind of have a rough estimate, or we're working on a rough estimate for what their desired projects might cost, is that correct?
Yeah, we're still waiting from Bray to give us some, some estimated numbers, because those numbers have increased a little bit from the last time we received them.
Okay.
So Matt is working on that. Matt did meet with me last Friday, as well as with Adam and Rorick. And so he's planning on getting some of those numbers for us pretty quick here.
Wonderful. So we have that happening very quickly, right, but we also do have responsibilities, board members, so I would recommend that we bring this back next month, when we have some more solid information that we can take a look at in terms of policy examples or administrative guidelines, something that everybody feels comfortable having here to safeguard, safeguard everyone without putting too many parameters on it, I guess I would say. And so at this point, then I recommend we bring it back in June. And I think that it's up to the folks that want to raise money right now, if they want to get started, knowing that we are still working out some of those details. And so that's why I would ask that you give your contact information so that we can work that out as well. So my recommendation is to bring back the policy and the guidelines for June, but to allow these two gentlemen to start with fundraising if they so choose at this time. So that would be my motion, would be to allow Mr. Griffith and Mr. Han to start with fundraising when they would like, knowing that the Board will be bringing back our, our policies and guidelines in June to work out the details that the district would need.
I'll second that.
So I gave it a motion, we have a second from Nolan Jackett. Is there any further discussion or questions from board members? Or any directive you'd like to give to Scott or Stacy in terms of research the next few weeks? Okay?
Tracy, when you say the next June board meeting, are you talking about the special meeting on June eleventh, or the one later on in the month?
It depends upon how quickly we can get it together.
Okay.
So, we'll see. I know we've already started some work on it, so we'll see how quickly we can get it done. So the good thing is we have two opportunities in June, right?
Correct.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay, and that motion carries. Thank you very much for the discussion, and thank you, gentlemen. Next item on our agenda for discussion and possible action is our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board meeting and workshop proposed schedule. And Stacy, I'll let you take this.
Sure, so as we look at the schedule, we consider a number of factors. One being the time of the month that the meetings occur, just from a business standpoint, from the fiscal standpoint. Not having it too early in the month is, was challenging for the high school team. It can be challenging to have it in the fourth week of the month, so really trying to balance that along with being cognizant of when our area schools are having their board meeting dates, as well as certainly what works for the board members as well. So really a balance of all of that. Looking at having or hosting on the Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month. And I'm not sure if there are any conflicts within there that we can identify on any of those particular days.
I will say to the board members, because we have a fairly new board, two board members who've just been here for a year, and two are, where this is their second meeting, that while we try to stay as close to these dates as possible, they are not set in stone. And so we know that things do come up over the course of the year, and sometimes we have to, to make some adjustments. So just know that we can have that discussion if you find a conflict along the way, and we can bring it up and decide if we can set a new date or time for that meeting. But knowing that and looking at these dates already, are there any significant conflicts you want to make sure that we discuss right now? And to be clear, these were discussed with the area superintendents as well.
Everything looks good to me.
Okay, is there a board member who'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting and workshop proposed schedule.
Is there a second?
I can second.
So we have a motion by Nolan Jackett, second by Tiffany Stapleton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay, and that carries, we now have our date set for the next year of meetings, thank you. The next item up for discussion and possible action is our builder's risk insurance. I'm sorry, I skipped one. Our, is our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six health insurance and other district benefits.
And Mr. Nelson is not able to be here tonight, so I'll share a couple pieces, highlights related to the health insurance. Our health insurance and benefits, district benefits expires actually June thirtieth. And so our July first renewal of the Crumdale Insurance includes a twelve point five percent increase over last year's premium. And so while obviously any increase requires our attention, this figure aligns with broader market trends out there. We did build in a twenty percent increase to the budget projections. You'll notice that the twelve point five compared to the fifteen percent that we talked about a few weeks ago is related to a new network that really allowed Crumdale to reduce the increase by about two point five percent. And so what that does essentially is savings of sixty thousand dollars puts forth an additional savings. So typically in a health insurance in broker, the broker would share with us that typically you'd have about a fifteen percent increase upon first renewal in a self-funded plan, because the first year is immature, your claims are only running eighty, eighty-five percent. And so the majority of the increase of these claims are going into a fund, which obviously a hundred percent of the unused dollars would then be returned back to H U H S next year. So there's a better chance that we'll be receiving a surplus at the end of the contract, and then the, the claims are stabilized. Just also wanted to point out one other piece, we're excited to announce that partnership of the Samaritan Fund this year, and so what that initiative provides is relief to those who are facing significant medical challenges with the burdens of you know, high-cost medication or treatment. And so all of our employees are eligible for that fund. If they qualified, they were accepted. As well as their dependents then move off of the health insurance plan that we have and enroll in an individual health insurance plan with the help of Samaritan Fund. So there's a cost to the district for those employees that are accepted into the Samaritan Fund, but then creates a positive impact financially to the district. So just wanted to note that as well in terms of savings. And we are essentially, we're recommending that the Board approve these benefits as presented. Any additional points, Tracy, or questions that anyone else has?
I know I've had a chance to hear about this. I believe our other board members have as well. We've heard about it previously. If you have any questions for clarification at this point in time? So to be clear, this includes the, the insurance and benefits, including the Samaritan Fund.
Correct.
Hearing no further comments or questions, is there a board member who'd like to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six health insurance and other district benefits as provided in the packet.
Is there a second?
I second.
You have a motion by Nolan Jackett, a second by Tiffany Stapleton. This is at a cost of district, so we will do a roll call vote. We'll go ahead and start with Nolan.
Aye.
Aye, Tiffany?
Aye.
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 And that motion carries unanimously, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is now the builder's risk insurance.
And so as we go through the construction phase of the referendum, we do need to have that risk insurance in place. And so we received multiple quotes and are currently recommending that we move forward with the Hanover Insurance Group at the cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars, and this would cover the time period between May or now through October of twenty twenty-six.
Stacy, is there any possibility that that cost would fluctuate?
Not to my knowledge, from what I have been told.
Okay. I'm just asking because I know often our, our motions for action would include a dollar amount. You might say not to exceed or for a cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars.
Sure, I think we can certainly, if you want to indicate that it will not exceed the cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. I don't know if Ms. Peterson, if you have anything else you'd want to add related to the builder's risk, no, okay.
Okay.
We did go and look at multiple quotes, and this is what is being recommended in terms of what will cover us as well at the, you know, most economical cost savings, so.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from board members?
So I, I guess the one thing I would wonder about is because this is tied into the referendum projects, is there any chance that this comes out of the referendum dollars that we, from the referendum?
That I'm not sure. I would need to get back to you on that, Nolan. And I can certainly double check with Mr. Nelson on that.
Yeah, when he gets back, that would be helpful.
Will do.
And that still leaves room for us to approve it this evening. We just haven't seen this cost before in terms of it being a part of a bid package that's come our way. So we can still approve it and then we can get clarification on where that funding comes out of um at our next meeting. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the builder's risk insurance policy from Hanover Insurance Group, not to exceed a cost of $19,835. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy Henness, a second by Mr. Ken Miller. Uh, we will do a roll call vote. I will start it off. Aye. Tiffany?
Aye.
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 And that carries. Thank you. Our next item for discussion is Initiative One Professional Learning.
Okay, and Mr. Nelson is not here tonight, but Dr. Shlee, we may have other things that she might add in addition as well. But the district administrative leadership team is really seeking to engage in a 16-month transformational leadership process. And so the focus is on building strong leadership foundations rooted in trust and effective collaboration. And so this professional learning process indirectly, but certainly significantly contributes to a more positive and effective learning environment for students and ultimately, you know, improves their overall educational experience. So there's really an emphasis on the collaborative, building the collaborative learning environments where educators are feeling valued and empowered. And the Initiative One, which is the transformational leadership um organization we are looking at bringing in, provides the concrete tools and frameworks that leaders can apply directly to their daily work. So the ultimate goal, again, is to influence and enhance student outcomes by maximizing the support. And so we listed in there the in the bullets um the various ways in terms of supporting effective classroom strategies, positive school climate, improved decision-making, enhanced collaboration, and increased accountability overall. And so 50% of the professional learning is being paid or would be paid through grant funds. Um, and what we would be looking at is $6,500 per administrator. And one thing I just want to note that this is not a one and done um conference. This is onsite integrated learning over the course of 16 months, so over the course of two, essentially two fiscal years. Um, but really in in my opinion, I'll speak for myself, um essential in building up our trust and collaborative culture within our teams. Are there any questions?
So just for clarification, um, the the total number of possible administrators enrolled would be 12, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And I know I've asked you this question before, so I'll just ask you publicly, um, how is the buy-in from our our current district leadership team?
I think there is a strong desire to um have an opportunity for support and move forward as a team. Um, I think that's something that we all are on board for doing and certainly positively impacts our staff, our teachers, our students ultimately in the end.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Nolan?
Yeah, uh, so seeing there that around 50% of it and can be funded through grants, uh, off the top of your head, do you know which grants those are?
Sure, great question, Nolan. So the Washington County uh Mental Health Grant is one grant in particular where a sum of money would be able to be pulled, and I did confirm that. As well as Title IV also has funding um that we can utilize for that component.
Sure, I'll also jump in and say that we're also looking to um reallocate some of the um funds that we were using for the peer review mentor grant that we're um hoping to secure from DPI. We've secured it for the past several years, so we're fairly confident that um we'll receive that grant. Um, and by reallocating some of those, we'll also be able to tie our free up, excuse me, some of the Title II grant monies that were um proposed last month for our teacher professional development. So we could potentially have additional grant dollars supporting this um in addition to what is already listed.
Thank you.
Questions from Ken, Heather, or Tiffany? Another question I have is I know that um sometimes being trained in a program makes you more marketable to other districts. Is this one of those where, you know, if a if a leader here would say, oh, I was trained in Initiative One, is that something that makes them maybe a more attractive candidate in another district?
I think certainly fundamentally, the training is um very well respected uh across the state and it's also beyond Wisconsin. I would say that any administrator, certainly at any given time, you know, has the ability to um leave. I'm not sure if that's what kind of you're referring to, but I think um certainly it's very well, it's a very well-respected professional learning process.
Okay, not that I want anybody to leave, let's be clear. Um, I just I just ask because I know having worked in education in the past, often when a district weren't was investing money in somebody in leadership, there might be some kind of agreement on on the backend, like, yeah, we're going to invest this money in you. However, if you decide to leave our district before a certain date or like there'd be some kind of agreement, you will have to pay the district back for X amount of dollars or a percentage of it.
And we do do that for other um opportunities that we have across the district. Um, certainly it's something that could be in conversation. This is really our whole entire district leadership team, however, though, that we are providing this opportunity. So it really is universal tier training um for our district administrators.
Okay, and I know I asked you this question before. I think you're going to find out the answer. Um, say we start this journey with 12 people and one or two leave a year into it. What happens to those spots that we have committed to paying for?
Well, certainly whoever comes into those positions that someone leaves, we would want to obviously bring that person along in the journey. So we would be moving those individuals into those positions essentially with the understanding that we would have to do some catch-up on the professional learning. And, you know, no mistaking, this is definitely um hard work for our administrative team. There's a lot of work that goes into this. Um, and it's it's really great work in in building the collaboration and trust across our building.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. It shows um again, just like we're all seeing and noting, it shows that commitment to excellence that we have here at HUHS and how everybody is just willing to to put in what it takes and um do their jobs joyfully and keep pushing us forward for all students. It's really wonderful to see. Um, any discussion or more questions from board members?
The last thing, go ahead.
Heather?
I was just going to say that everything that you're covering is sort of the um like non-technical of the learning environment that should be incorporated into the teaching journey. And it's only going to enhance um our teachers and just make them better teachers, make the team better, I shouldn't say teachers, um, the district better. It's it's those soft skills that need to be there. Um, where the black and white skills of the the more um technical, you don't get this kind of training. And if there's something like that out there, I think it's good to embrace it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Heather. Nolan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, the the last thing that I have is obviously pending its approval, is I would love to uh see feedback on this program in the future.
Absolutely. That's a fair ask. And I guess I would add also that given the amount of grants that we're being creative about, um, I would anticipate probably being over 50% would be covered by the grants. We say that conservatively. However, we do have a number of opportunities to ensure, especially over the course of two fiscal years, um, to engage in this process.
It'll be wonderful to see how how something like this could impact the entire district. Um, so it looks like, given the fact that we have grants paying for a substantial percentage of it, potentially even more, the total cost from the general fund would not exceed $39,000 over two fiscal years?
Over two years, correct.
Okay.
And again, I would anticipate that would be lower. And I would just emphasize again that this is not a one and done conference. This is definitely integrated onsite learning over the course of two years.
Okay. So in terms of making a motion, if a board member would like to make a motion on this, we do have um we know it's called the Initiative One Professional Learning Process, and we do have a couple of different dollar amount figures we could include in there. Um, for example, at a maximum cost of $6,500 per team member or um not to exceed that total dollar amount at the bottom over two fiscal years. So I'll leave that up to whichever board member would like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Initiative One Professional Learning Process for 12 administrators to participate in, not to exceed 39,000 over two fiscal years from the general fund.
Thank you, Heather. So we have a motion by Heather Berry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Nolan Jackett. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will put it to a roll call vote and we'll start with you, Tiffany.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. That has been approved. The next item for discussion and possible action is Integrity Environmental Services to perform the asbestos abatement. Exciting stuff. Not really.
Yeah, everybody loves asbestos and abatement.
No.
Um, so for bid package one, the asbestos um abatement is not a contract that's held by CG Schmidt. It's a district-held contract. So that is why we are bringing this to you um inside, outside of the bid package itself. Um, so I worked with EMC, that is Environmental Management Consultants, um, to perform asbestos um inspections. And uh so this would be with the bid package one work being done. So the upstairs bathrooms have asbestos. Um, there's a few smaller areas within the work scope that will need asbestos abatement. Um, we did receive multiple quotes, um, the lowest being $18,477 and the high end was $47,680. Um, I would like to go with Integrity for the um asbestos abatement. They are also um our approved um demolition contractor in bid package one, so this would kind of bundle them together with us.
Thank you, Tracy. I want to um just thank you for bringing all of this information forward for the community to see. Um, it's truly wonderful how transparent that um you are being with this entire process. Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from board members? I guess one more question I have for you, Tracy, is we know that the bid was $18,477. Um, as a board, we'd like to try to, you know, hold hold a company to their bid or to their dollar amount. Is there any kind of a a percentage you see that possibly fluctuating or should we go ahead and and go for the not to exceed $18,477?
Um, I I could see putting in a 10% contingency.
Okay, thank you. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion? I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the contract with Integrity Environmental Services to perform asbestos abatement for the Phase One referendum construction projects at a cost of $18,477 with an additional 10% contingency. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will put it to a roll call vote and we'll start with you, Heather.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, that has passed. The next item for discussion is express insulation to insulate the small gym ductwork.
Um, so after the referendum passed, uh, we have all met multiple times. So Stacy, Scott Helms, Kelly, and I have all met to discuss capital projects for the building. Um, one of those being the insulation for the small gym. Uh, when we had replaced the small gym HVAC, we went from an air handler to rooftop units. Um, when those were installed, uh, the board approved lowest bid and it was value engineered, which meant that they were um kind of doing things as things as cheaply as possible. And when I first started here, uh, one of my first tasks was to um eliminate the leaking issues in the small gym. So we had the rooftop units that were leaking and then also the ductwork was not insulated. So whenever the temperature is over 70 degrees and the dew point is higher, it is leaking all over in the um the small gym. Um, so the replacement goals, and um I just want to take a second to thank Val because uh she introduced us to Gemini, which is AI. So I worked with my AI on all of these uh fun pictures in this slideshow. So um we would like to resolve our condensation issues, um, reduce the noise from the HVAC. Insulating that ductwork will reduce the noise for band concerts and choir concerts and also protect the gym flooring. It's a wood floor and with having constant moisture on the floor, it's um, it's not safe for the kids, number one. It's a it's a slip hazard and it's not good for that wood floor. So we received quotes from Express Insulation and Wisco Insulation. Um, this is another lovely AI picture. Uh, Express Insulation was $41,500 and $52,800 was Wisco Insulation. So um my recommendation would be to approve Express Insulation for the Small Gym Insulation Project.
And Tracy, just so I'm clear, is that 10% contingency built into the $41,500?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Is there a board member who would like to make a motion? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract with Express Insulation to install fiberglass insulation and white protective jacketing on the two ductwork runs in the small gym at a cost not to exceed $41,500. Is there a second?
I can second.
We have a motion by Tracy Henness, a second by Tiffany Stapleton. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to vote and we'll start with Ken.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that has been approved. Thank you. Uh, the next item for discussion is the fieldhouse curtain replacements.
Um, so in talking with Scott Helms, um, this was one of the items that we felt um really needed attention um to kind of brighten up our space in the fieldhouse and increase the functionality. Um, the majority of these curtains are not motorized, but we do have one motorized curtain in the middle of the fieldhouse. And that one, um, we have had them come out to repair quite a few times. Um, and these are just kind of an eyesore and they're very, very um noticeable in the fieldhouse. Um, as you can see, I pulled this picture off of our social media and you just see that curtain in the background. And changing the color of that would really help the aesthetic appearance of our fieldhouse. Um, and these curtains were installed when the fieldhouse was first built in um Scott helped me out 90? Yeah, 98 or 99. So their their replacement is due. Um, they've they've done good, but um have lived their life in our fieldhouse. We received three bids, um, the lowest being Jan Construction at $26,400 and that is with a 10% contingency added to the quotes. So my recommendation would be to contract with Jan Construction for the cur um fieldhouse gym curtain replacements.
The question I have is I I don't see a picture or a description. Um, what would the new curtain look like?
Uh, we would work with Jan Construction. Um, it would either be a solid black panel or we could do orange and black, um, orange on the top, black on the bottom. So we would, I would work with Scott in designing those and getting those ordered through Jan Construction.
Okay, thank you. Nolan?
Are we going to put that 10% extra on all the projects we're discussing tonight?
Um, I think there are a few that do not.
Okay. Questions from any other board members?
I have a question. Are you considering, are you still keeping the motorized unit in the middle then, or?
Yeah, well, it would still be a motorized unit, but the curtain would be replaced. So the motor and all of the components would still remain the same, but it's been like the wiring that goes through those curtains that has really been an issue, and it's the old curtains causing those problems.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Assuming the motor is still good, working order?
Yep. Yeah, those do not need to be replaced, thankfully.
Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
I'll do it. Motion to approve the contract with Jan Construction to replace the fieldhouse divider and main curtains, not to exceed the cost of twenty-six thousand four hundred.
We have a motion by Ken Miller. Is there a second?
I second.
And seconded by Tiffany Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this also is a roll call vote, and I think we're back here to Nolan starting it.
No.
Aye, Tiffany?
Aye.
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 And that has been approved. Thank you for your votes. The next item for discussion is Schmidt Flooring to install carpet and LVP in classrooms one twelve, one thirteen, one fifteen, one sixteen, and one combined space, one seventeen, and one eighteen.
So when, again, when the referendum passed and we were talking about what would benefit our students the most, and what we could do with our capital projects funding, Kelly and I really discussed updates in classrooms, and flooring was one of the biggest items. And Kelly and I worked very closely together to create what we want as a standard for our classrooms, for the hard flooring, or for carpeting. So these are our rooms with the highest needs. The carpeting on the upper right is called a power bond carpeting, and that was installed probably in the late eighties. That's been in our classrooms ever since. It, it, it looks like it's in decent condition, but if you've ever been in those classrooms, when it's warm out, there is a very musty smell from them, and it's not healthy for the kids. And then in the agriculture classrooms, they have very old VCT flooring. We just want to start giving classrooms a fresh, updated look, choosing a few classrooms every year, and just continuing with a, a replacement plan. So Schmidt Flooring was the low bid. Kelly and I, again, we went through multiple products that we could install in these classrooms, and the type of flooring and type of carpeting that, that we chose was offered by these two companies, and we have worked with both before, and we're very happy with results of both companies. So my recommendation is to have Schmidt Flooring replace the flooring in those listed classrooms.
Are there questions from any board members?
Yeah, on that photo on the left, was that tiling on the flooring in there?
This one?
Classroom? Uh, one more up. Yeah, on that left.
Yeah, that's called VCT tile. Yes.
All right. Is there a reason that we're replacing that too? I know the carpeting was explained to me, but.
Yes, so I, one of the egg classrooms currently has carpeting. I, we really need to switch that out because they have animals in that classroom, and it's a health concern having animals in a classroom with carpeting. And with the VCT flooring, we would like to switch that out, number one, to get it, give it a fresh, updated appearance. And because VCT flooring is no maintenance, other than cleaning, whereas with this VCT flooring, you have to scrub and recoat every year, and every five years, you're completely stripping it and rewaxing it. So eliminating those rooms with VCT tile so that we are doing less maintenance, and my maintenance crew has time to do other things around our building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If approved, what's the timeframe of, of replacing the carpet?
If, a lot of flooring companies are getting booked up for the summer, but we do have a two-week winter break that we could get them in to replace that flooring. So that would be my plan, considering that we're doing referendum work this summer, and I also have summer cleaning and maintenance that we're managing. So my plan would be to replace that flooring and carpeting over winter break.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Is there a board member who would like to make a motion for action on this?
What is the total cost for Schmidt?
Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-nine.
And that doesn't include any contingencies or other issues?
Correct.
How confident are you that they can hold to that bid?
I'm very confident.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion to approve?
I will make the motion for Schmidt Flooring to replace and install carpet and LVP in classrooms one twelve, one thirteen, one fifteen, one sixteen, and the combined space of one seventeen, one eighteen, for a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars.
And just to be clear, did you want us to say VCT in that?
It says LVP here in the.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing.
LVP is the type of, of flooring that we're putting in. We currently have VCT.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you both. I'm just, I'm seeing it worded differently in different places, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. This would also be a roll call vote, and hearing no further discussion? We'll put it to vote. I'll start it. Aye, Tiffany?
Aye.
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 No.
All right, thank you for your votes. That has been approved. Up next for discussion is the purchase of new classroom furniture.
Again, this was a discussion between multiple levels to identify rooms and find areas where we can improve student, the student life at Hartford Union High School. And one of those pieces is the furniture. As you can see here, we have very old desks. I can't even tell you the age of these. And we really need to update, not only for student ergonomics, it's the comfort level, and just the, the impression of our school. So Kelly and I met with multiple contractors, and we looked at multiple pieces of furniture. We wanted it to be engaging and modern. We wanted better space utilization. And we also wanted students to be able to sit independently, sit in groups, or set up the furniture like tables. So these are all of the different ways of the furniture that Kelly and I had looked at that you could be able to set up a classroom. And I actually have an example of it over there if you wanted to take a look at it. It's up in the corner.
Kelly, are you going to hold it up for us?
Yeah, Kelly is very excited about this. Thank you, Kelly.
It looks sturdy, too. Is it heavy?
Yes.
So looking at the shape of that desk, it looks like they can be combined in groupings or rows, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, right there, yes. Thank you. Wonderful. With, with ventilation.
Yeah. Which is key on hot days.
Yes, nice. Thank you. Tracy, is there anything further you want to add about this?
Um, so I do have a pricing breakdown.
Okay.
So the price per desk is three hundred sixty-one dollars. We average thirty desks per classroom, and price per chair is a hundred forty-six eighty-eight. And then there's additional delivery, freight, and installation. So the total cost per classroom is eighteen thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars. So the total for, for classrooms is seventy-two thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. And as you saw, that desk was shaped like a goldfish, so I asked AI to put an Oriole at a goldfish-shaped desk.
Okay. It was cute.
Any questions?
Nolan, I believe, were you here earlier today and got a glimpse in those classrooms?
I, I did.
Is there anything you want to share with the board?
I, I guess I can say this. I mean, for all my years throughout grade school, middle school, and high school, I don't think there's anything wrong with the desks that are currently in there. I mean, I did enough group projects, and whenever we had to move them around, that was never really an issue. I guess with this, I just think it's seventy-two thousand dollars to solve a minor inconvenience. So I, yeah, I mean, I, I like the desks that are in there. If they've been around for that long, I, I think they're fine. I don't think there's any comfort issues with them personally. But I just don't know if I can justify seventy-two thousand dollars for a minor inconvenience.
I will say I'm quite a bit older than you. I believe those desks were here when I went to high school. Although they maybe even have baskets underneath. I didn't see baskets in the picture, but that reminds me of the desks we had in long, long rows in the huge study hall we used to have. So they might be that old.
I would say, from my teaching perspective, when I'm looking at the picture here of the rooms identified, the desks, the actual desks on the right are extremely inconvenient for kids to get in and out of when they are trying to make or do group projects. They, it makes your room arrangements really difficult. So when you're trying to do group work or collaborate with other peers, the kids have to climb over that bar. They don't have a huge work surface, so it does make having your Chromebook out on top with notes or, you know, a worksheet, graphic organizer, whatever, next to them, extremely difficult. And they're, they, I get kids complaining all the time in my own classrooms about how uncomfortable they really are. Especially now with block classes, when they're sitting in those desks for an hour and a half, they are really not comfortable at all. I myself don't like sitting in them when I have staff meetings that I have to sit through. So my vote would be to approve at least getting rid of those desks with the bars on the side, if we don't do anything else.
Thank you for your input. Any other board members? Looks like Ken's ready to say something.
Is Paragon the only company that provides desks of that nature?
Yes, Paragon is the only company that provides that type of furniture, and we would be contracting through CJ and Associates.
Thank you, Heather.
So seventy-two thousand dollars, I'm digesting that. In all my years of working and going to conferences and going anywhere, and having, you know, like, places on my employment, they would do ergonomic studies. So they would sit there and they'd say, okay, the most important thing is your desk height, and the way you're looking at your screen for neck and all that stuff. And the chair, the chair's the most critical. I can tell you, being a remote worker, I took my chair from my office because it's at my, sitting in my, my home office, because I can sit in there for like up to five hours. And that investment, I think, is well substantiated, because then you don't get the uncomfortableness of sitting in meetings, or sitting in classes, or sitting in the block. I don't know about the tables, the, the moving around and that. So I'm, I'm just having a hard time on the tables, but I believe the chairs are critical. Chairs are critical for our ergonomic development. So I don't know. I don't know if we can revisit this with maybe some other options that's a little bit less than seventy-two at our next meeting and just, but that's just my thought. The chair is critical, because I literally can find myself sitting for five hours and I go, oh, I need to get up and walk around, because, you know, the comfort of your chair can be the enticement or the sustainability of keeping a student's attention, because they're comfortable physically. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Tracy, maybe to help the board, were there any other desks considered?
Um, we, like I said, Kelly and I looked at multiple other pieces of desks. None of them had the collaboration that these provided, where you could use them as either a table setting, a group of three, a group of five, or, you know, it had multiple functions to it that we both really liked. And that's what we wanted to create as our standard. I am asked on a routine basis for tables for classrooms, and we just do not have any to provide. So this would kind of bridge that gap between desk and table, and would give teachers the options for both.
Do we have money in our budget to replace desks and chairs over time? Is this something that's been budgeted for?
This has not been budgeted before. This is something I would like to put into the ten-year capital, capital projects plan. Before the referendum passed, the past few years, we have just been putting out fires with, with HVAC. So this kind of opened the door for these opportunities.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ken, are you ready to say?
Yeah, well, there's, there's, there's four classrooms. And, you know, why those four classrooms is, is, are, are they the oldest, or they the?
We chose those four classrooms because those are the same classrooms that we're replacing the carpeting. So it would be going through, you know, four or five classrooms each year, replacing carpeting, replacing furniture, and painting walls, which we would do in-house, just to give the entire space a fresh, updated look.
Oh, so this would be a reoccurring, you know, every year, four classrooms, four classrooms?
Yep.
Give or take.
How many classrooms do we have?
I don't have an exact count. There are quite a few.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just thinking four per year might take us a while.
Worth noting that a lot of those classrooms, especially in the upstairs wings of our building, have the exact same desk that we saw in the photos in there. It would be a lot of money over a lot of time to do all of them.
Correct. Our science spaces have new desktops. Those are, those, the science room spaces were recently renovated. There are other areas of the building that would not need new desks, but yes, the majority of classrooms do have that old seating.
Is there any kind of a lead time that we need to be aware of, in terms of how long it would take to get them?
They did say there's a lead time of about, I think she said fifteen to twenty weeks. So again, this would be another project that we would complete over winter break.
Okay. So this is nothing that would get replaced this summer?
Correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions from board members at this point? I heard at least one comment. Go ahead, Tiffany?
Well, I'm just looking at, I, I agree that price per desk, and I've done a couple of different classroom renovations now in my career. I think that's a bit high from what I've been able to find on my own. So I guess I'm, I'm all for the flexible seating and flexible classrooms, because I know how important it is to instruction. However, I'm wondering if we can't find someplace to get us a cost a little, a little bit less than that, and it might be a little bit easier to swallow.
Okay.
So it sounds like board members may appreciate a little bit more information and more options? Is that fair? I guess I'd also be curious, knowing this is only four classrooms. We have a lot of classrooms with some very old, probably pretty uncomfortable furniture. And again, if they were desktops that were made at the time when we just had a notebook out, maybe a notebook and a textbook is a little bit different than a laptop and, and paper as well. So I'd be curious to see if there's any kind of a discount or price break when you order X amount of desks or something, too, just kind of so we can kind of get an idea of, you know, do we maybe want to take a look? do we maybe want to take a look in the future of doing six classrooms at once instead of four or something to that effect? So I think at this point, it sounds like we'd just like to see a little bit more information.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely do some more research and bring you some different options.
Okay. And then if, if you hit a stride where you and Kelly feel like, hey, there's a lot we want to talk about, this board could also, we did not form any committees at this point in time, but there have been years where the board had committees for various things. There could be a committee for the interior of the building, you know, furniture, aesthetics, something to that point. So just kind of thinking outside the box, if that's something that you guys decide would be helpful, just let the board know and we'd be happy to work with you on that as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much for the, the information. It's appreciated. The next item for discussion is an autonomous scrubber purchase.
So when I first started at the district in 2023, we had seven full-time staff members on our second shift custodial crew. We had a retirement and we were coming into budget cuts. So I eliminated that position and we had absorbed his cleaning area. And then we've been very much struggling with staffing. We had another retirement and we were not able to replace that person. And we got in task cleaning services to clean our locker rooms. And then we had a resignation earlier this year. And we also have someone out on long-term disability. So we are down to three full-time custodians and task cleaning services and one part-time custodian on third shift or on second shift. And my staff is unable to clean to the quality that's expected and that they expect of themselves. So we looked into the Cenobot autonomous floor scrubber just to kind of supplement their cleaning. So the autonomous floor care is very efficient. It extends your cleaning hours. It very much reduces your labor costs. I would foresee eliminating the part-time four-hour cleaning position if we did purchase the Cenobot. It prolongs the lifespan of your flooring and offers consistent cleaning, which to me right now is the most important because when my staff is unable to fulfill their job duties, usually floor care is what gets left behind. So we have not been cleaning our, our hallway floors for, you know, it's not consistent and it's maybe once every other week. The Cenobot versus other autonomous scrubbers uses LiDAR technology versus a mimic cleaning. So it has very fancy radar on it versus a normal autonomous scrubber that you would have to walk its path with it and then it mimics what you did. This actually maps everything in real-time 3D. We had done a demonstration with this machine and we went into the cafeteria, just walked it around the, the whole of the cafeteria. And, you know, it was like a two-minute walk. And it, within 30 seconds, it mapped the entire area. It mapped the tables and chairs as movable items so that it knows that if those are not in that exact spot, that it should clean those areas. With the Cenobot, there's no monthly or yearly software subscriptions and no cost for software updates. The price, and the price point is much lower than others. And what makes this really unique is that it automatically will charge itself, refill itself, and dump the dirty water by itself. So basically, you check the squeegee on the bottom, make sure it's clean, and it'll just go run its path. This was a return on investment study that was done by Imperial Supplies in Janesville. And what I really noticed on this was the annual labor cost. So this was taking, you know, a normal riding scrubber as opposed to the Cenobot scrubber. Their annual labor cost was $15,750. And this was four hours of cleaning per night. And the Cenobot annual labor cost was $450. So that's where we would see the biggest cost savings is in our labor. I did receive three autonomous scrubber quotes. As you can see, the Cenobot price point is much lower and this actually has a higher AI technology than the other two. Any questions?
Warranty. What kind of warranty or repair coverage does this include?
This includes, oh, I didn't put it on here. It does include a three-year warranty on all parts and service.
Thank you.
What's the lifespan for it?
A normal, and I would assume for this too, since it does have the free software updates, a normal riding scrubber or any push-behind scrubber, normal lifespan's around 15 to 20 years. Life expectancy of the lithium batteries that we purchase for our scrubbers are normally six-year. It would be replaceable. I'm not sure on cost.
I'm sure that's something you can look up or get for us.
Yes, I can, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from other board members?
Why do you think they're half the cost?
This was a company from overseas that kind of started really looking into this technology. And, yeah, they just came up with a great product at a great price. I don't know exactly where they were from, but I know Karcher and Nilfisk. Nilfisk is a Norwegian company. Karcher, I forget where they're out of. But they're all trying to kind of beat each other at the autonomy game. The Karcher and the Nilfisk have been products out on the market for years. And they really haven't changed their design in the last five years. And that's why I would have never brought this up to you, even last year. So when I did get the Cenobot demonstration, I was like, okay, this is something that I can get behind.
Any other questions for board members? Thank you for providing so much information. This is, it's amazing what they make these days, right?
Yes.
Is there a board member who would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the autonomous scrubber? Looks like the total cost is actually $47,904.95.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a board member who'd like to make a motion for approval? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of the Cenobot autonomous scrubber at a cost not to exceed $47,904.95. Is there a second?
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Tracy Hennes and a second by Tiffany Stapleton. We will put this to a vote, which would be a roll call vote. Where did I leave off? Is it me?
I think it starts...
We'll start with Tiffany.
Aye.
Heather?
No.
Kenneth?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you for your votes and for the presentation. That has been approved. The next item for discussion is the food service joint agreement for meals. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I do not have a formal presentation with fun graphics, but I'm here to answer any questions you have.
We all have to learn from Tracy now.
This is essentially renewal of our contracts with our KH districts that we provide meal service for. We have been doing it for many years for the various schools. Are there any questions?
I believe I have to excuse myself from this vote.
So here's, here's a...
Kind of.
An idea or a conundrum, right? I think that we do not have to lump these all together as one. We could parcel these out. That way you could vote on the rest of them. So would you like to make a motion to take one of these out to an individual vote?
I would like a motion to remove the H&R proposal and do that as an individual vote.
Okay, I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of making the H&R agreement an individual vote signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed that carries? I would also like to make a motion to make the Holy Hill Area School District agreement an individual vote. Is there a second?
I second.
So we have a motion by Tracy, second by Tiffany. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed that motion carries? Any further discussion?
Good example of how the school districts can work together to save money.
Thank you, Nolan, absolutely. Anything else from a board member? Hearing none. So the first recommended action would be a motion for approval of the St. Gabriel and Aaron meal agreements.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the St. Gabriel's and Aaron School District joint food service agreement.
Second.
Motion by Nolan Jackett, a second by Kenneth Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay, that motion carries. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the, the H&R District Food Service Agreement for meals between, for meals with Hartford Union High School for the 25-26 school year. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Tracy Hennes, second by Nolan Jackett. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. So we have four ayes and Tiffany has asked who abstained from that vote. Thank you, Tiffany. Is there a motion on the agreement with the Holy Hill Area School District?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the joint food service agreement with the Holy Hill Area School District.
Motion by Nolan Jackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kenneth Miller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the, the agreement with the Holy Hill Area School District signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And please note that there were four votes for aye and Tracy Hennes abstained from that vote. Thank you. We have made it through our items for discussion and action this evening. Future board, sorry, future school board related dates. The most exciting date coming up here, graduation ceremony on Friday, May 23rd. The ceremony starts at 7:00 PM. Laura did send out an email to board members. Should we be here 45 minutes early? Okay, and so I did talk with Kelly this week and she can update me later, but I did ask her to just talk to a representative who handles graduation to give us some tips on setup of the table and helping the board practice ahead of time. So that's why we come early, so we can kind of get oriented to what we do, where we are positioned, and then do a little bit of practicing of handing, handing off the diploma folders. Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Please thank Chad for us as well, so. Which board members are able to be here the evening of Friday, May 23rd for graduation? I know I am. So it looks like we have three. Okay, thank you very much. Nolan or Kenneth, that that changes? Just, just let me or Kelly know.
Sounds good, will do.
Thank you. So we've got the graduation date coming up. We also just this evening approved the extra meeting in June for June 11th at 4:30. Is that correct, Laura? Okay, so be mindful of that. And then we have our regular board meeting on Monday, June 23rd at 5:45. Wonderful, thank you. Possible future agenda items. This is a portion of the meeting where we can talk about any possible future agenda items. You're always welcome to contact me or Stacy with that as well, either via email or a phone conversation if you'd like. I will say that, so we did our reorganization meeting this evening. We, we talked about the board roles, we okayed other, other things that we okay yearly for the district. If we had any standing board committees, that would have been something we would have also discussed and appointed different board members too. We currently don't have any committees of the board. It is something that we have had in cycles in the past. So we can keep that in mind as we go forward in the months ahead. And just like I mentioned earlier this evening in the meeting, if there becomes an obvious project or need, there are ways we can either form an ad hoc committee or decide, hey, you know, I think we've got, we've got some reasons to go back to forming some committees of the board that would be standing committees. So keep that in mind. And there are some policies surrounding that that we can, we can review in the future as a team. I think that in the near future, it would be beneficial to this board to have some sort of a workshop and that might be something good that we could add to that workshop agenda. Is there anything else on a board member's mind that they'd like to say now about considering for possible future agendas? Looks like we're good. Please keep in mind, you can bring those up at any time. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session? And I'm just, I'm just gonna bring this up. This is a, thank you, Nolan. This is a contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee or which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. 19.851(c) specifically superintendent search, superintendent candidate review, and administrator compensation. So we have a motion to go to closed session. Is there a second? We have a motion by Nolan Jackett, second by Kenneth Miller. We are going to a roll call vote into closed session, starting with Heather.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are going into closed session.